First, we get started, I want everyone aware, in case you arrived early, there are handouts in the back of the room. One handout is the presentation slides that you'll see on the screen this evening and at Monday night's Spring Annual Town Meeting. The pink booklet is the detailed proposed fiscal year 2024 operating budget and capital improvement plan. The green, thinner booklet is the Finance Committee report recommendations for the spring session of the Spring Annual Town Meeting. And then there's a brief handout, which is the Finance Committee's report and recommendations for the special town meeting. So, again, those are in the back. They'll also be available on Monday evening at town meeting and at Thursday evening. And what we'll go over this evening is, this is an information session. It's meant to provide you as town meeting representatives with information to prepare you in advance of the town meeting session. This is not a mini-town meeting, so we're not here to debate merits or advocacy or what have you for the articles. It's really an opportunity that if you have questions, myself, as manager, John Souzer, our finance director, is also present, as is Evan Belansky, our community development director, who will explain the zoning articles for you. And, again, they'll also assist with some of the capital and other articles. So, again, this is your opportunity to ask questions. You know, it doesn't preclude you from asking questions or obtaining other information on Monday evening, but, again, this is meant to help facilitate your preparations. And so, again, sometimes in a smaller session like this, it's a little bit easier. Also, if you still want to catch up with us, either following the session this evening or between now and Monday night, or even what we expect would be Thursday night's session, please don't hesitate to contact us. So, that's how we'll handle tonight's discussion. So, I'll go through all the articles of the Spring Annual Town Meeting, which will begin Monday at 7:30 over at the Senior Center. And then Thursday evening, we'll begin with the special town meeting, the five articles there. And then, once that's completed on those articles, we'll then adjourn the special town meeting and then complete action on the remaining articles of the special town meeting. And I think the expectation is that we should complete all action by Thursday evening. In the event, it will not be completed by next Thursday evening, then the schedule, unless altered by the town meeting body, would proceed to the following Monday and then following Thursday until all the sessions are completed. So, with that as intro, we'll get started. The first article is a traditional article at all town meetings. It's the reports of town offices and committees. At this town meeting, we'll have a report from the age-friendly committee implementation committee in terms of their progress to date. Fred Russo will be giving a presentation. You have the slides. And, again, you can catch up with Fred either at the town meeting before or during the town meeting. And then also, following that, I'll give an overview of the financial condition of the town. And I think I'll sort of quickly touch upon that this evening, just to give you a sense of, well, how does it all come together? What are we looking at? Where are things at? And so, that begins on page nine of your handout, or slide 19, as we move forward. And basically, what we're able to report is that at the current time, as we're about 10 weeks away from the end of our fiscal year, that ends on June 30th, is we are, we'll finish the fiscal year in the black. You know, at the end of the year, our revenues will exceed our expenditures. And moving ahead for the proposed budget for the upcoming year, we're offering a level service and level staffing budget. As you know, we're in sort of extraordinary economic times. We're going through a period of inflation that we haven't seen since the late 1970s, early 1980s. And there's still some economic uncertainty in terms of what may lie ahead, in terms of the economic condition of the community, the state, and the country, and perhaps the globe, in terms of what happens with this extraordinary period where we have high inflation, low unemployment, and concerns of a recession coming out of the pandemic, and really the new world condition. So, with that, when we prepared this budget, starting back in October, and then met with the Finance Committee Select Board and School Committee back in December, and then released the budget at the end of January, and then had sessions before the Finance Committee, and then recommendations in February and March, and then even as late as a session two weeks ago at the Select Board for recommendations, you know, we basically took a conservative path. We didn't add any staffing, net staffing positions in the budget, and we basically were trying to account for what we would call sort of fixed costs or inflationary costs of things such as health insurance, fuel, and so forth. So, again, it was level staffing, level service. The one thing that was extraordinary that occurred during the process is that the state has a new governor. The new governor was given an extended period of time for the state procedures and had until about seven or eight weeks ago to release the state budget, which is basically the end of February, where normally it's done at the end of January. So, that sort of truncated our situation and presented some uncertainties with developing our budget. But one thing that did change this year is, we did receive an extraordinary amount of Chapter 70 educational funding. And the House budget that was released the end of last, a week ago today, has the same level of funding. And so, it appears that that will be there, but we're not modifying the budget at this point in time, which leaves us in a condition that we expect will have excess levy capacity, or we won't be taxing to the full extent of Proposition 2 and 1/2. Now, that's not to suggest that property taxes will go down, it just, because they won't. But it means that we're not utilizing the full capacity at this period of time. And then what we did is, working with the finance director, we've updated our financial forecast for the five-year period that we provided every spring and fall town meeting. And at this point, we have about a 1% surplus, i.e. this excess levy capacity. And then we forecast, given reasonable assumptions, that we'll be, you know, we'll be balanced for the subsequent two years. And then there's, you know, a projected slight deficit of about 1% or so for the upcoming year. So, basically, we're at a point where we appear to be in a stable economic condition, again, realizing the uncertainties of any model and the uncertainties of the world. And what that really means is that when we convene at Fall Town Meeting in October, we'll have closed out the current fiscal year. The state budget process will be completed probably in July. Our books will get recorded to the state in August. We'll have our accounts submitted to the state. They'll then certify our undiscussed fund balance of free cash. And then the town will decide, as typical at Fall Town Meeting, what, if any, further investments or actions. And as I sort of noted in the air, you could, the town at that time, has the same choices. You can put it aside for savings. You could make additional infrastructure investments. You could reduce the increase in the property tax levy, or you could take other action. So, that's sort of just a general overview. So, once that's completed, we'll now go to a consent agenda. The moderator in recent years has utilized a consent agenda, which is basically a consolidated article. And what it does is, in this case, it takes 10 articles that are ministerial or basically recurring at every town meeting, or there's no action being asked on the articles, and has the town meeting take them up in a bundled package, which doesn't mean you can't ask questions or debate, or actually pull one out if that's what you want to do, but it's just meant to facilitate the, you know, the, I guess we'd call them, for lack of a word, housekeeping, or traditional articles that we have at town meeting. And so, that's what will happen here, is there'll be a motion to take these 10 articles that are listed under consolidated vote, and then we'll proceed with each of the description on each of the articles, and then it'll be one vote to act upon those articles. For the sake of tonight, what we'll do is, we'll go through the articles in numerical order. We tried our best to have the articles that are into consent agenda in relatively straightforward order, so that way you're not flipping back and forth to follow the debate and discussion. But for tonight's purposes, we'll just go in order. So, once that is completed, you know, we'll then resume with the articles as numbered. So, the first one is Article 2, and that has to do with the current fiscal year budget, which, as I mentioned earlier, we have about 10 weeks left in the fiscal year to close out. What happens is generally, the beginning of April, a couple of weeks ago, our town accountant confers with the town's department heads, the finance director, and myself, and we say, "Well, what do we foresee that we need to close the fiscal year?" Because, again, this was a budget that was adopted last April, that began last July and runs through this June 30th. And per the cases, always some adjustments. We're running a $150 million-plus operation, and, you know, uncertainties, you know, fall where they may. And so, this is what we have. In this case, we've got three areas of funding. The first one goes to the budgetary line items. All three of them is public safety expenses for $127,000. The second one is municipal facilities, personnel services, $41,500. And then the final one is municipal facilities expenses, $78,000. The next slide gives you a little more detail on the adjustments, like why are we coming forth for a budget change on the public safety expenditures, and where are they? This really pertains to the police and fire departments. And the police department, it was unforeseen expenses having to do with the recruitment of five additional police officers. There were also some unforeseen issues with building maintenance, including the furnace and some repairs in the parking lot. We also, with the new police reform, they updated the use of force module, and they did an upgrade to their firearms. In the fire department side, the issues really come down to maintenance and fuel oil. The budget on vehicle maintenance needs an additional $56,000. That's a budget that's $130,000 in the original appropriation. The previous year, we actually spent $169,000, and the upcoming year, we're budgeting $181,000. So, what we're seeing is, like everything else, inflation happening here in terms of the cost to maintain our existing fire fleet of what now are $850,000 fire engines that were, for purchase price in today's dollars, that we keep for 15 years. And, you know, things happen, just with the daily use of those vehicles. So, that's, as I said, that's extraordinary, but then looking back a year, and then as we're budgeting for the upcoming year, we've made a correction to that budget. And then the other one was diesel fuel. Unfortunately, unlike the price of gasoline, which we saw a drop in price, the price of diesel fuel has sort of stayed sticky and stubborn. And that's whether you were heating your home with home heating oil, for those who still do that, or for the purchase of diesel fuel if you're at a service station. Virtually, well, all the fire engines and ladder trucks and everything run on diesel. And so, there's a requirement there for another $26,000 beyond the forecast that we had made 15 months ago for that budget. And then there were some miscellaneous overruns in utilities and building maintenance. And then, when we move to the issue of facilities, municipal facilities, which, again, cares for the 26 town and school buildings, we had some adjustments needed on the personnel side and on the expenditure side. The personnel side has to do with, you know, this labor market of, we incurred some costs in terms of the employment of an HVAC technician, which are heavily in demand in that area. And then we had to incur costs with removing fire department alarm equipment removal for the no longer in use fire alarm system, since that's been phased out. And then we had some other staffing adjustments, and then we had to do a major repair at school catch basins. And then, on the expenditure sides, it was the finalization of the Roberts Field project, which dealt with some unexpected drainage and irrigation costs that were unforeseen in the project. So, that's sort of the adjustments that we made in the year. The funding source for this is the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund. As you'll see later, we set aside $400,000 every fiscal year to address the unforeseen costs that arise during the year. So, that's what's here. So, and again, if there's any question at any time, please stop me, raise your hand, and I'll go with that and pause the presentation. Yes? Hi, Joel.
Quick question. Items that you identify as contributing to this that do not meet more than I expected, how were those items selected in a sense of, were they identified by people as, well, this was something that happened, I'm not assuming? Or is it that there's a group of things that cost so much, and you said, okay, we're just going once, and I can identify as, you know, potentially, I'm just wondering what the process was.
Okay. Here's how it happens in process. You know, the fiscal year begins, and all good managers, you know, like to stay within their budget, and they tend to be conservative. And, you know, there are some things that arise that are unforeseeable, such as a boiler repair and furnace and so forth. And so, most of the departments will tend to, like you may do with your own budget, they'll tend to hold back. And then, as they near the end of the fiscal year, they're a little more comfortable, and then they'll do, you know, they'll incur expenses that, you know, they have that ability to do. But what happens in this case is, these are items that arise that are identified, and then what we try to do over the course of the year, we try to recover, are there some adjustments that we can do? And then, knowing oftentimes there aren't, we then identify them, and then we bring them, knowing the town meeting's going to take place in April, we bring them to the town meeting for funding. So, that's generally how it works. And I think the track record over time has shown them to be pretty modest with, you know, with the requests across the community. Yes?
Did those costs ever?
They've been incurred, yeah.
So, how is that represented? Is it the funds that are being incurred?
Right.
Taken out of the budget?
Right. So, what that means is, right now, the funds are solvent, but if we project, what are we going to expend over the next 10 months? What do we need to close out the year? That's how it's done. Yes? Yes, Helen?
I'm just curious. Is that actually?
Hmm. Yeah.
How's that $70,000?
Those were, the Roberts Field project was a $1.6 million project for, if you've been by there, the extent of the playground, the new fields, the benches, and everything else. We've, like any other project, we had a project contingency, but we ran into expenses that were exceeded what we envisioned out there, namely in the area of drainage and irrigation costs.
My question though, wouldn't it go back to the first company that laid it out?
No, because most of that work, we incurred ourselves. In other words, we did use some subcontractors and vendors, but a lot of the work was done by DPW, so that's what happened there. So, no, if you have a fixed-price contract, unless you have unforeseen conditions, then you'd have a change order. Right? Okay. All right. So, once action is completed on Article 2, we'll now move to Article 3. And Article 3 is the article for funding for collective bargaining agreements with the town's unionized employees. The town has six unions on the school side, which range from the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the lunch people, the school custodians, school administrators, and so forth. Those do not come to town meeting, because then the state law, the school committee has autonomy to settle those contracts without seeking voter approval in Massachusetts. So, you never see those, and those numbers are into the school budget. And the general government side, as we call it, which is non-school department, we bring those agreements to the town meeting for approval. The town traditionally, in recent years, has the contracts aligned. They generally tend to be for a three-year period, and they all tend to expire simultaneously. In that way, the reason for that is, it tends to be a level playing field across, because as we've seen, economic conditions can vary. And also, quite frankly, if you can get the budgets and the negotiating done in one year, it kind of gives you, the school committee and/or the town management, sort of a respite away from the bargaining process for a couple of years, period of time, and it gives you some ability to project financially. So, in this case, for the current fiscal year that began, we call fiscal year '23, and then that would be the first year of the agreements, which basically began, again, eight months ago, and it runs two years through fiscal year '25, which would be two years from this July, are most of the agreements. That's why you see FY '23 to FY '25. And the towns' unions on the, are now on the town side are the police superior officers, which is the police sergeants' union, police patrol union. There is the public safety dispatchers. So, there's the three unions that are housed at the police station. You have the firefighters' union, which is the fourth, and then you have the library employees' union, that's the fifth. That's what we have on the general government side. In recent years, four unions of the town dissolved and became non-union employees. That was the clerical union, facilities union, highway union, and cemetery. So, they are no longer unionized employees, they're in the personnel play plan. So, we are pleased to bring to you that we have agreements with four of those five that you see listed there on the page. First one being the police superior officers' union, the sergeants' union. We have an agreement that covers a previous three fiscal years, and then a second agreement that covers the current year and the next two fiscal years. And you can see the terms for the, on Slide 24, for the prior three fiscal years, the agreement is, was for 3%, 2%, 2%. And that's really in keeping with the pattern of settlement for the other unions at that time. And, again, these agreements have been ratified already by the unions, have been approved by the Select Board, and recommended by the Finance Committee, and the final step is town meeting approval of the agreements. So, that's the first of the police superior officers' labor agreement, so it closes out that window from '20 to '22. The next agreement is for the current fiscal year and the subsequent two fiscal years. And what we agreed upon there was, for the compensation piece, is a $1.75 per hour adjustment in the wage scale, and then 2.5% for the, for the three years, each of the three years of the contract. And then there were some minor adjustments to what we call stipends or costs within the contracts that get adjusted periodically. So, when you see officer in charge, that increases by $10 per shift. That's a case where, there occasionally is an opportunity where there is no police lieutenant on a particular shift, because they run three eight-hour shifts on a given day. If the sergeant is the officer in charge, then he would get the $75 for the shift, so it's an increase of roughly $10. And then also, the agreement was that, in the event that there are extra paid details that occur on holidays, and the town has 12 legal holidays, which are the ones that you recognize, you know, from the government, you know, it goes from New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, you know, all the way through Patriots' Day, which we just had this month, you know, through Thanksgiving, and then Christmas. In the event that there were a public safety detail on those holidays, then the detail rate would go from one and a half times the overtime rate to two times the hourly rate. And we saw that in some of the other collective bargaining agreements. And that's how we do this. When we negotiate with the unions, we do two things. We look at internal equity across, how are we providing our employees across the pay schedule? And then we look at external equity in terms of, well, what are comparable positions of that hold this, in this case, position in other towns that are similar to Chelmsford? You know, so we look at places like Borica, Tewksbury, Drakehead, and so forth. And then, the one that was most noted there was on Juneteenth. The state, two years ago, adopted Juneteenth as a legal holiday. The contracts didn't have that in that, because the contracts were signed prior to that additional holiday added by the state, so we added that to the holiday. The next slide shows an adjustment to the educational incentive that, again, is provided by our comparable communities, and it actually exists in our patrol agreement. And the reason we're only getting to this now is, there was a promotion from patrol officer to a sergeant who had this educational incentive, but unlike his peers in the sergeant group who were grandfathered under the old condition of this educational incentive, we're now putting it into the contract so that going forward, all receive it, and it's competitive with the other towns. And then, same thing, shift differential, we increased it by $10 per week, so those who work the second and third shift will get an extra $10 a week. And similarly, we adjusted the physical fitness program increase by $500. And there was also the withdrawal of the remaining Department of Labor Relations complaint between the town and the union. So, that would clear the deck on any labor actions between the town and this employee group. So, that's the summary. Yes, Sheila?
The legislative labor agreement, these, you know, the additional money and the new legal holiday, is it okay that it comes down from the state, or is it just a law that's around the town?
Well, the issue of the legal holiday of Juneteenth came from the state. The state adopted Juneteenth, and technically, the towns did not have to adopt it in terms of its compensation for its employees, but yet we're required to close, you know, we as municipal government are not operational to the public on Juneteenth, much like we weren't, like, much like we were closed on Monday of this past week for Patriots' Day. And so, then what we see is, what happens is, the state employees get the holiday pay, and then we just see it roll into the municipal contracts with other employees. And we've done it for our personnel board, you know, and mean, non-union employees. You know, so, on Juneteenth last year, you know, we closed our operations. But what happened was, because it wasn't in the contract, the union employees didn't get the holiday pay because it wasn't called for. Yeah, so they would get paid, but they would, because, again, police and fire work 24/7, 365, so they get paid, but they didn't get the holiday pay because it wasn't a holiday.
And what about the differentials? Is that something?
That's competitive. I mean, you know, that you see across communities. And what we do is, we, all the, remember, cities and towns work in a public records environment. So, our labor contracts are out there, the, all the labor contracts are out there, and then what happens is, is all sides have them. So, we have what others are receiving, and then the unions know what others are receiving. And so, we basically put them together and say, okay, well, how are we? Because it becomes the issue of retention and attrition. If we want to be able to recruit and hold on to employees, we have to be competitive with the labor market, no different than any other industry, whether you're at Raytheon or, you know, or Market Basket. I mean, it comes down to the ability to attract and maintain our employees.
So, are there generally any issues that we can push back on, or do we have to go along with the rules?
Well, generally, you want to go, and we give an example, and you'll see it when we come up, like, for example, we're having a very difficult time at the entry level of the pay scale. And that's no different, I mean, whether that's in the school side, it was very challenging with paraprofessionals, meaning teachers, aides, and those type of positions. And on the town side, we were struggling with employees at the public safety dispatch, for example. And what we're seeing is, it's difficult hiring at that level, and part of it is the cost of living, quite frankly, in Chelmsford and the area, or in Massachusetts in general. Much like when we get frustrated when we go to a store and there's, you know, a restaurant closes because they don't have the help, or a store doesn't have enough people to wait on you, we run into the same challenges of a competitive labor force where, you know, we put out positions, and we're having a hard time getting qualified candidates. And that goes currently to, you know, even civil service lists for police officers and such, you know, it's, but we've had a real particular, right now, in the area of public safety dispatchers. So, and it's just reflective of the market. So, what would happen is, is we'll lose people. And in fact, you know, I was sitting today, we're, we have a hard time, you read about this often in the press, we're having a hard time right now getting CDL licensed equipment operators, which is what you saw in the winter, when we couldn't find people to do snow removal for cities and towns of the state. And part of it is, it's a changing nature of the workforce as well. Not only is there a shortage of workers, people, younger workers today, value their time and aren't as interested in the older days of working the extra hours. And so, to answer your question, Sheila, yeah, we struggle with that, even to the point where, you know, we've seen ourselves in some of our neighboring towns lose highway employees to the state because the state has had to up their ante. I mean, look at what the MBTA is doing right now. They can't find employees. So, as much as we say, oh, you know, but the reality is, is we're in a competitive labor market, and so, yeah, we could, if we choose not to compete, then we're going to suffer in terms of the quality of the workforce. So, that's the summary of the police superior officers' agreement. On the patrol officers' agreement, the term's similar, three years, again, another market adjustment to the wage scale. So, basically, by the end of this agreement in June of 2025, the, a base salary for a top-step patrol officer would be just over $70,000. patrol officer would be just over seventy thousand dollars. We did have an agreement that all new patrol officers will be required to obtain and maintain an EMT certification. Right now, we have a requirement for 50% of the force, and what happens is, is if there's attrition or promotion, then that 50% balance is in question. So we agreed with the union, we'll just make all new people required to obtain and maintain. Same thing, they added Juneteenth to the list of holidays. We increased the call-in bay, i.e. callbacks, from three to four hours. And that, again, is a market standard of four hours if they're called back to work for a minimum. And then there was an agreement we reached with the union that any patrol officer, prior to being eligible to be promoted to the position of sergeant, will have had to have worked in Chelmsford for three years. And I think, so that way, if we had a transfer in, we wanted to make sure that person had worked in the town for three years. So that was it on the patrol agreement. On the public safety dispatchers agreement, again, three years, again, another market adjustment to the wage scale. And I'll explain how this one works, Sheila, to go back to your point. Right now, our biggest competitors for dispatchers are the Tewksbury-Drakeett Regional Dispatch Facility that operates out of Tewksbury. We look at Beowulf, and we look at Westford for dispatchers, and we looked at the pay scales. And what we ended up doing was mirroring what they did at the Tewksbury-Drakeett Regional Facility. We provided a dollar an hour increase, plus two and a half percent, for the first two years of the contract, because that's what our competitors were doing. And so, right now, at the end of the agreement, a seasoned top-step dispatcher, i.e. one that has reached the top of the pay scale, will earn just over sixty-four thousand dollars. We added fifty cents to the shift differential, again, added Juneteenth, added a hundred and fifty dollars to the uniform allowance, and added two hundred and fifty dollars to the emergency medical dispatch stipend. And then the last group were the library employees, again, three-year period, again, two and a half percent for the first year, 3% the subsequent two years, and then there was an additional 1% of the top step only for the second year of the contract, and then again, adding Juneteenth to the, you know, to the list of legal holidays. So that was our actions on our labor agreements. And again, if this is all approved, the only union that will be outstanding in terms of without a contract is the firefightage union. We had a mediation session with them a week ago. We were close, but weren't able to wrap everything up in time for this town meeting. And in fact, I have a conversation with the union reps next week, and we'll try to keep working on this. The next article is Neshoba Tech's School District's Assessment for the Upcoming Year. You can see the assessment is 3.86 million. I'm not going to walk you through all the slides that are in your packet, but in essence, the union budget, and they provide a lot of history in terms of our enrollment, the capital needs of the district. We are the largest sending town to the district at Neshoba Tech. We have five, the district picked up a total of 27 new students for the upcoming year, five of which were from Chelmsford. The budget goes up by 6%. Chelmsford sends over 200 students, 212 exact, or just under 30% of the students come from the town of Chelmsford. And so the town's assessment goes up by 3.75% for the, 3.49% on slide 43 for the upcoming year. Now, how that works is, in fact, the majority of, once the majority of the district member communities adopt the agreement, then all the communities are in. In fact, our superintendent will not be with us on Monday evening because there's also a town meeting going on in air that evening. So the Chelmsford, Neshoba Tech School Committee members will be there to present the budget and answer any questions that you may have on Monday evening. But again, they're, yes? Go ahead.
Can I ask you, um, is Neshoba Tech getting more students from Chelmsford?
Yeah, what's happened is, is technical schools are in demand in recent years. In fact, there's a shortage of technical school space. They've, they've tried to, what they've done is, they've not taken in any, what they used to call school choice, of out-of-district students in recent years, for the last two years. This is sort of their enrollment period for the upcoming year, right now, and that doesn't appear to be changing. And in fact, there, you know, there's even talk of potential wait lists because of the demand, you know, for the technical skills that some students can avail themselves at Neshoba Tech, whether they intend to go into a trade directly out of school or go to college for, you know, for computer technicians and other aspects of computer science or other fields. So yes, this has become a much more competitive environment in recent years, which is why we've seen our enrollment surge. The next item will be Dr. Lang will come and present the Chelmsford Public Schools Budget. That's a budget of 70 million, seven hundred thousand dollars. And he will have a detailed, it's available online, but they will have handouts at Monday night's meeting of the detailed school budget. School committee held a hearing at the beginning of March, where they went through their budget book, page by page. They've met with the Finance Committee. So we're in concurrence with the 70.7 million dollars of their budget. And Dr. Lang has provided these slides, which you can read at your convenience in terms of, you know, the priorities for the school department in the upcoming year. So that's what will take place under that article. And then when we move, complete the two school budgets, Neshoba Tech and the Chelmsford Public Schools, we then do the general government budget for the town, which, yes, go ahead. Yes, Sheila?
Um, so back to the two-point-something million that the, that the chapter that we're getting from the schools.
Yes.
Because it's not like we're getting from schools or any of those, we don't, we're not sure we're going to be able to do that.
Well, you got it.
Was it too late? Did schools accept that entry by Tuesday?
No. No, the, let me sort of take a moment and explain how this works. We're receiving, in the upcoming budget for anticipated local aid from the state, it's, let me just pull the exact numbers so they have it for you, we're scheduled to receive 21 million dollars from the state in state aid for the upcoming fiscal year as a total. Out of the town's 153.6 million-dollar budget. Of that, the Chapter 70 would be 14 million dollars, 14.1 million dollars. The school department's budget is 70.7 million dollars. We, the, obviously, you can see, most, the town funds most of the school department's budget. In fact, the state also specifies the minimum school spending that the town has to provide for its schools as a condition of receiving state aid. We're a third or over the minimum school spending. So when the additional funding came in, rather than just saying, well, we have some additional Chapter 70 aid, let's expend the monies, I think the sense from the superintendent, myself, school committee, and others was, we're comfortable with our budget, and just because there's more money into the pie, we're not going to advance additional spending, particularly given the economic uncertainties that we're facing in front of us. So at this point, yes, we're receiving more state aid. We're certainly complying with the full exhaustion of state aid to support the schools' operations, but we're not going to increase the budget. Roughly, two out of every, two out of every three dollars of discretionary spending for the town goes into the schools. And therefore, if there were to be an increase in spending because it was additional state aid, it would not have all gone to the schools. So that's why the decision was made, was to be conservative at this point in time, and I think that's what we're proposing, and that's really, you know, sort of where we started and where we're still at. And again, I don't foresee that changing at this point in time.
So basically, the police may have received that 2 million in their budget, and it would be 2 million dollars to the town.
No, no. No, because this, no, because the school department doesn't receive any direct aid from the state. The local aid comes to the community, and then we appropriate the monies. So that's why, you know, it's not, they don't get, you know, you know, unlike, since the 1980s, that's how it is. If you went back to the 1970s, there was a separate school tax on your property tax bill, and there was a separate town tax, but that all went away with Proposition 2.5. Okay. So then we'll move on to the general government budget, and you see a series of line items in the detailed pink book is all the deep line item, you know, sub-items, details of all the budgets. As I mentioned at the outset, we basically have not changed a single position in the town. It's as if, and it will happen, we will continue on July 1st, the same we finished on June 30th. There's no new positions, no new focuses, it's basically status quo. Because here's the concern, and you saw it a little bit in the forecast, if Proposition 2.5 is limited by 2.5%, and we're running an inflationary cycle that's 6%, we know that that's not sustainable in the long run. And so, rather than sort of spend every available dollar and then be coming back with contractions or cuts in services or personnel in subsequent years, we're, like you said, we're going to steady the course and try to weather the storm as we see it going forward. You know, I think the expectation, if you remember the forecast, we were sitting here a year ago, the thought was this inflationary period that was, we were into, that was meant to be transitory. It was, oh, that was just because of the supply chain issues and results of COVID and everything else. And then all of a sudden, as you saw, the inflation didn't go away, and then now the Federal Reserve is acting in haste, trying to rein in inflation back to the historic 2% levels that we've seen for the last 40 years, at the same time, without destroying the economy, at the same time, trying to watch this banking crisis and global uncertainty. And so that's why we're sort of taking this approach of, you know, slow but steady wins the race, and not be, you know, be basically expending monies because we have monies available. So, so again, we've leveled staffed, and not, and believe me, there are legitimate needs. We could bring in front of you, made departments of the town, from the library, to the police, to the fire, to the DPW, schools, name you, who could make legitimate cases for additional resources. It's just not the time, you know, because we're trying to be financial stewards for the town, because we know in the back of our minds, the town of Chelmsford's not passed an operational override in 30 years, and we don't foresee one in the immediate future. And the last time it was tried, back in 2008, it failed miserably. So we're basically trying to be steady and balanced. And we also realize, you know, what's happening to folks, that in terms of what it costs to live in the community, we see, we know that, you know, when we see tax bills going at $8,000 a year on an average home that's, you know, assessed at $600,000 and everything else, we know this creates challenges for many of our residents. So that's what we're trying to do, but at the same time, trying to be competitive with our market. So, so again, that, those are the individual line items in the budget. In summary, if you, if you look at, you know, you can see, these are the major items that we had to adjustment, and you can see, none of them are adding people or services. You can see there's adjustments for our retirement assessment. You know, we're a member, under the state law, of the Middlesex County Retirement Board. Our assessment went up by 795,000 dollars, or roughly 8%, okay? Health insurance premiums, our premiums went up by 3.3%, that's still above 2.5%, that was almost 550,000 dollars. Our employee compensation, i.e. the, all the payment for what we are as a service industry, was up by 860,000 dollars. Solid waste and recycling, we bid our new contracts for collecting the recycling and trash at Curbside. The good news is, we had three bidders. The bad news is, none of the bids were great. So we end up taking the lowest qualified bid, which was the lowest bid of the three. We'll have a new hauler as of July 1 that will be doing solid waste and recycling, so it'll actually be the same company. So next time it snows, we won't have one company saying we're not picking up, and the other one picking up, when we have these marginal storms or other challenges or issues with the routes. We'll have a new, we'll have a new company. And it's part of that, it's some good news here, that not, is that they'll also be doing weekly collection of recycling. So not only will your trash get picked up weekly, your recycling will get picked up weekly. That's how they contracted, how they wanted to do it. We accepted that, you know, because, one, it was the least cost to offer, but it also enhanced the service. And also, we're able to restore the leaf collection, and so we'll actually have periodic leaf collection in the spring and fall time, so people won't have to bring their leaves to various places or have paid to have somebody remove them. So we actually had an enhancement of services here under this new contract. We also have a increase in our unfunded liability towards our trust fund for retiree health insurance benefits. And then, as we mentioned earlier, Highway Division also runs on diesel, and so we have almost $100,000 of cost for diesel and gasoline in the Highway Department, $60,000 for building maintenance. Our insurance for property casualty and workers' comp is up by 50,000. Most of that is property insurance, and that's affected by what you see, and you may see it in your own homes. The insurance markets are running very expensive because of the, some of the major storms that have hit the areas of the country and the insurance pools, as well as the fact of inflation as well. And then Medicare tax, which is basically a tax on your payroll. And so, those are the main items in the operating budget. And again, it helps explain, well, why are the taxes going up? When we complete action on the operating budget, we'll then move to Article 7, which is the Finance Committee Reserve Fund. Once again, we'll maintain that fund at $400,000 for the current fiscal year. And again, that's meant to provide funding available in periods when town meeting's not in session, to avoid a need to call it a town meeting for, again, costs. And then when we are at town meetings, such the case, we'll use those funds in, you know, as a funding source. And then Article 8 is the capital budget, which is for our capital investments. And I'm going to turn the microphone over to John Souza, who's our Finance Director. John, as Finance Director, chairs the town's capital budget process, and John's going to review the items in the capital process for us this evening.
Thank you, Town Manager Cohen. Good evening, everyone. The Capital Planning Committee met last November, December, and we reviewed 30 projects totaling 6.77 million. And after careful consideration, the committee voted to recommend 17 projects totaling 4.38 million dollars. We recommended that 10 be deferred, and three were withdrawn. On this first slide that you see, it's, this breaks out everything by functional area, and you can see that when you look at the total of 4.38 million, public works and public facilities, sort of in the middle there, account for just over a third of the investment that we're making. And then school buildings is just under half of the total. And then, what we, so all of the projects total 4.38 million. We have just over 244,000 of recaptured funds, which are funds that are available from prior year completed projects. The most notable one there is, after the South Row School roof was completed, we were recovering 238,000 from that project, and that's due to MSBA reimbursement. So the net amount borrow will be just over 4.14 million. If we go to the next slide, what we'll do is, we'll take a look at these projects a little more in depth. So the first area is municipal technology, and you can see the first project is a security camera upgrade, and this is planned for the Police Department, as well as three of the fire stations and two other locations in town. The next project under technology is a door security upgrade for 75,000, and that's part of our ongoing plan, working with technology to transition a number of town-owned buildings over to electronic locks. If we move on to the next area, this is under Municipal Administration, and we have it titled Town Clerk, because the Town Clerk's actually been leading the public records organization and storage effort, but this actually benefits all the departments that share town offices. And 160,000 is planned, and the reason for this is, we're going to be converting two areas in the town office building at 50 Beowulf Road from a wet, a water-based fire suppression system to a dry. And the reason for that is, when these two rooms that you see there, lower level three and sub-basement three were originally, when fire suppression originally went in the building, when the center fire station was constructed nearby, these rooms were not used for record storage. So the issue that you have is, if there was ever a catastrophic event at the town offices, it was a fire or something like that, you wouldn't want, when the fire suppression system comes on, to destroy all of the records. So that's the reason for that. So that's the reason for that conversion. The next area is our Public Libraries, and this is a project planned at Adams Library. If you've ever driven along Boston Road, oh, I think we have a question.
Yeah, sorry. I have a question on records.
Yes.
Are they, are they also stored electronically, like somewhere in the piles?
Some are. There's a number of ones for the Building Department and Planning Board in different areas that are just paper, but wherever we have electronic records, they are stored digitally.
Put them in the big, huge sheets of paper.
There were a lot of maps, and there were a lot of plans and things that were submitted. Some of these were submitted years ago before, you know, the digital age really took off. But, so we have a combination. There are other areas that have older historic vault, you know, books and things of that nature. But wherever we can convert, we have, we do have a lot of digital records.
And just to give you a little, if some of them are stained maps, would they have like the Lowell D place electronically?
They usually, they're usually required to submit more detailed plans to the, to the Building Department and Planning, Community Development Office than what you would see. You may have someone submit like a plot plan or something, or record it with it, something at the Registry of Deeds, but they don't submit all of the numerous plans that they're required to submit. Yes.
Okay, I get it.
Yep. You're welcome. And so if you've ever driven down Boston Road, this wall actually goes along just behind the sidewalk area near the parking lot. It was constructed about 20 years ago, and the issue is, the, the wall has actually been slowly leaning over, and, you know, sometimes you have issues with retaining walls. So this is going to be completely reconstructed and, and replaced. And the cost for that is 100,000. Then we move on to Public Safety. For the Fire Department, there are two older vehicles that are being replaced. The first is an investigation vehicle. They're going to be replacing an older Ford Crown Victoria sedan with an SUV-type unit. That's just over 68,000. And then also you see in the lower right, there's a service rescue truck. It's a 2012. That's going to be replaced at a cost just under 112,000. And then if we go on to Public Works, we have recommended 350,000 for sidewalk improvements, as well as 400,000 for road improvements. You may, may have heard our Public Works Director discuss, the sidewalk plan was recently updated, as well as the pavement management survey and that whole list. So this will allow them to continue their efforts on reconstructing sidewalks and also repaving and doing other pavement repairs in the town. Yes.
I got a question. You might not be in the training to, to us about, we have so many residents in Chelmsford coming across the bridge to, to Lollap. I think, do you, do you know what the duty is to protect us?
As far, the, the Rook.
Is anything coming up?
I mean, we haven't, well, see. We, we have been updated periodically by state officials on the Rook Bridge replacement, which we anticipate construction begin in 2024, 2025 timeframe. But they have assured us, in the meantime, they are doing regular inspections and maintenance on that bridge, so it is safe. I know it sounds rattly when you drive across it, but it is, it is safe for travel, or they, or they would close it, ironically. But no, they, they have found some issues in terms of rust and other things, but no, it is structurally inspected, I think, four times a year.
And then in Public Works, on the next slide, this is a project that, the 215,000 will be used to purchase a truck body for a cab chassis unit that was already purchased on this year's capital plan. And this body will be used during winter for, and it will allow both application of rock salt and liquid brine, which brine is something that our Public Works Department has been using this year through a pilot program, because they're able to reduce the use of rock salt on, on town roads. Going on to the next slide.
Project.
What we were going to say ahead of time.
Yes.
Thank you. It really, it, I just wanted.
And it saves money, too.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, I want to say thank you to our Public Works Director, Christine Clancy, and all her staff in the Highway Division, because it really was a successful project. You know, they, they were able to reduce the rock salt usage. And so this next project is actually, 150,000 is being used to fund design work required for the rehabilitation and reconstruction of the School Street Bridge going over Stony Brook. A 2017 report, as you see there, noted the deficiencies in some of the masonry arch and the concrete block retaining wall. So this is part one. This will fund the design and the planning for this project, and then at some point in the future, the actual rehabilitation and reconstruction work will be done.
So with the deficiency, you know, you're going to say.
Right, I mean, there were deficiencies, but it wasn't enough to clo, you know, require closing the bridge, but it's something that we definitely want to work on. And then going on, we move on from there to Municipal Facilities. And one of the themes you'll probably see is, since we have some of our buildings, our municipal and school buildings are aging, you'll see some elevator projects, replacements coming through there. So this first one is for the Town Offices Building, and the cost here is for 480,000. You know, all the, the elevators in our municipal and school buildings are required to be periodically inspected by Department of Public Safety with the state, and, and there's a maintenance that's done on them. During a maintenance inspection, it was recommended to the town that this be replaced. We believe that this elevator, as many of you know, the Town Offices Building was remodeled in the 1980s into what we use it as for today, and we believe the elevator dates at least to that period. So that's, that's been several years in use. One key thing is on that slide is that we want to make sure that we keep the elevator up to date, because that provides the only ADA accessible route up to the second floor. And moving on to our school facilities, the first project involves a boiler replacement at the Harrington School for 316,000. As you can see, the current boilers were installed in 2002. We're going to be replacing three units with two. And then from there, the next project is at the Westlands Community Ed Center. This is an elevator replacement as well, for 325,000. As you can see on this slide, the existing elevator is about 33 years old. Many parts and components are no longer manufactured, so that's something we want to take care of. And from there, we, we have a project that involves both middle schools. So this involves replacing broken and damaged vinyl composite or VCT tile in the corridors and classrooms. So that, through this, when this contract is undertaken, damaged tiles in various spots will be repaired or replaced. And you can see the cost is just over 189,000 for that project.
Did you know asbestos in the ones that are broken?
No, that would have, the schools have worked over the years on asbestos remediation, but they would not be allowed to have like a tile, you know, an exposed tile in a, a public school like that. And then from there, we have, we move over to the, our high school. So we have a $207,000 project to re, this, and this is additional funding. You may recall in F, for the, in the current fiscal year, we funded 325,000 to purchase the boilers. What we experienced was that due to a number of cost increases for both labor and other, and other costs, the units themselves, this, this supplemental appropriation is needed to complete this project at the high school. And we have four older units that are being replaced with three. Also at the high school, that elevator is scheduled to be replaced. That elevator is believed to be about 48 years old. The cost to replace that is 480,000. As you can see, many, many of the components are really beyond their useful life, and it gets heavy daily use by both students and staff. And then the final project for the high school is a kitchen upgrade at a cost of 641,000. This is going to be used to fund the design work and also procure the equipment. One of the things that we have noticed is, with building improvements, the cost has gone up, and is likely, listening to our Public Works and Facilities Director, that an additional appropriation will be needed in the future for this. Yes.
I have a question. Are you able to sell any of the old server lines and connections?
I'm not aware. I know they've been in use a long time. You know, I, I would leave that up to, you know, Director of, Director of Public Works and Facilities to make a judgment call as to whether any of it has any value. We do sell surplus equipment when possible, but someone more familiar would have to make that judgment call of whether it has any significant value. So that completes our look at the capital plan.
Thank you, John. Once that's completed, we'll now start moving into enterprise fund budgets. And basically what enterprise fund budgets are, is they're self-contained budgets that fund the particular service and operation. And generally, they tend to be more modern operations of the town. So for example, the town's been in existence for almost 380 years. In more recent years, for example, you'll see is, the town took on a sewer operation, so they created a separate fund, where all revenues and monies for sewer are kept separate and accounted for separately. And then you'll see there's one for stormwater, one for the golf course, one for the forum, and so forth. So that's what these next few articles are going to be. So the first one is for the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the upcoming fiscal year. The total is 4.9 million dollars, and that all comes from sewer enterprise revenues. And this is a nine percent increase in the sewer enterprise budget for the upcoming year. And the detail of that is on page 70 of that pink book that I mentioned earlier. And the next slide sort of shows, well, why is it going up so much? Where are the cost drivers? We, we have to do some major maintenance and, and operational activities in the sewer enterprise. We've got to install grinder pumps at Katrina and Southwell Pump Stations. We have to do force main assessments and pump station repairs in our system, because now the sewer system is at that point of age where the state environmental agencies are saying, you've got to go in there and annually do assessments of the entire town lines, sections each year, and do repairs when work has to take place. And then our cost of treatment for disposal of our wastewater at the Lowell Regional Wastewater Plant went up by five, over five percent, or $100,000. So we're now be paying $2 million to the City of Lowell for the treatment of our sewer waste. Related to sewer, Article 10 is the Mylan Avenue Sewer Pump Station. This is a request for an appropriation of $542,000. That will be borrowed for the upgrade of the pump station that was built back in, originally in 1995. Back at the 2019 town meeting, we appropriated $25,000 for the engineering and design work. We came back in '20 for an appropriation of 350,000. And then this final appropriation will, will complete the, the job for the upgrade. And what you see, that's what you exist today. That's the 1995 vintage of how you installed a sewer pump station at that time in the ground. The next slide shows you what you do today, and what's, how it's going to be transformed. It's above ground, so only the pump is submerged, and so that will, again, carry us into the foreseeable future. So that's the sewer pump station upgrade. The next article is the Stormwater Management Enterprise Fund, 1.56 million dollars for stormwater management operations. That budget increases by 2.9% of $44,000 to maintain the 95 miles of drains in the community, the 4,500 catch basins, 600 drainage outlets, 210 culverts, and 50 detention ponds, and all the sampling that is now required, and catch base, and all of the actions that are required by the state and federal environmental agencies for, to preserve the quality of our groundwater and tributaries. Article 12 was the Chelmsford Forum Enterprise Fund. This is appropriated at $65,000 to operate the forum. The funding actually comes from the management company that, that operates the forum, so there's no impact on the property tax levy. And so again, that should carry us forward at the forum facility. The next article is for the Cable Television Public Educational and Government Enterprise Fund at $580,000. Again, no tax revenues here. This comes from the four and a half percent surcharge on the Comcast and Verizon cable television bills. And despite the trends of the cord cutting, we're actually seeing cable revenues remaining somewhat within our budget amounts for the year. Next is the Golf Course Enterprise Fund of $30,000 to support the golf course operations. And similar to the ice rink, the management company privately runs that facility, and then the town receives a $30,000 guaranteed payment for that, and we, we, again, retain that for the operations of, in maintenance at that facility. Article 15 is the Required Annual Appropriation of Departmental Revolving Funds. Similar to enterprise funds, these are self-contained funds where an activity is provided, such as senior citizens do trips through the Council on Aging, the money they take in for those trips is limited and only expended on those trips themselves. And similar for a respite care program that they offer. If we turn in old police cruisers, we use that, that funding from the sale of those surplus vehicles that we auction off to then equip the new vehicles. And similarly for, you know, seal of weights and measures, which are all the scales and so forth, and we'll talk about that shortly. And so that's how that, that works in terms of the, of revolving funds. So again, this is a requirement that currently is required to be voted annually, and there's, there's talk that the legislature may change that. You'd only have to bring it for a vote if you wish to increase the amount of the fund. Article 16 is the Cemetery Improvement and Development Fund. It is a request at this town meeting for $35,000 from, from, again, from the funding that comes from the sale of graves and lots and perpetual care at the cemetery. And they're going to use that additional funding this year to continue the completion of the expansion of the three and a half acre area at the Pine Ridge Cemetery. You know, doing work on the drainage structures, loam, hydro seeding, and lot design. The next one, Article 17, is the Community Action Program Fund, which is an annual town fund where we have set aside $10,000. This program began back in 1996, and it provides a modest amount of matching funds to support, you know, community improvement projects. Usually they're done by Eagle Scouts and so forth, and other civic groups to, to benefit the community. And again, since 1997, there have been over 100 projects totaling over $135,000. Article 18 is the, is an amendment to the town's general bylaws to codify the seal and weights and measures fees. And what this is going on with is, in the previous article, we had to approve the revolving fund for seals and weights and measures. That's basically the people who go out there, and they're actually hired by the Regional Council of Governments, the NIMCOG, or another Middlesex Council of Governments, their employee, and they're the ones who go out there and, and check the fuel pumps at the gas stations, so they make sure, and you see the stickers to make sure that when you buy a gallon of gas, you get a gallon of gas. And they check the price scanners at stores and the scales at pharmacies and supermarkets and so forth. And so, but what happened is, because the state hasn't adjusted those fees, the Council of Government said, well, your current fee schedule, you're not going to cover your cost of the inspections for what we have to pay an inspector to go out there. So we adopted this funding schedule to just cover the anticipated costs for that service. And again, any revenue that comes in doesn't just go to, into the black hole of the town government, it actually stays within the revolving fund to keep, because obviously, you know, you know, they're, they're testing oil trucks and so forth during the course of the year. So that's what we're doing, is, is under the state law, you either adopt the state standard, or you codify it in your own bylaws. So that's what's taking place here under the direction suggestion of the Regional Council of Governments. Article 19, and, yes, go ahead, go ahead.
What's, that part of the law?
That, yeah, that is the, that's the small scales. Now, if you go to a pharmacy, I, I looked it up, too, because I didn't know what it was. That's the small, those small measuring scales that you'd see if you're doing, if you're getting a prescription drug at a, at a pharmacy, that's what that is. Yeah, because I said, too, I had to look that one up, like, what is, you know, I thought it was a French word, maybe, like, what does it mean or something? Yes.
It's not a word, but did, are all the towns within this collective that you referred to going to use this?
Hi, but yeah, my understanding is she, the regional administrator for the Council of Government sent this out to all of its communities, because we, we all pay for that, The next two articles are zoning articles, and our Community Development Director slash Town Planner, Evan Belansky, is here to explain, in hopefully understandable terms, because zoning is always complex. zoning is always complex, what is being proposed under these two zoning articles.
Article 19 is essentially a housekeeping article due to an inadvertent deletion back in 2019 town meeting when we were updating this section. Some of you may recall, back in 2019, town meeting was asked to insert a historic sliding scale related to undersized, single-family lots in town. And in doing so, subsection 2 was inadvertently deleted. So this article is requesting the town meeting reinsert section 2. Section 2 essentially says that in a case where the building commissioner cannot grant a byright building permit, that those cases automatically go to the Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit. That's consistent with the State Zoning Act. And over the last couple of years, while this provision was not on the books, it created a lot of confusion, not only for myself, but for zoning board members, building commissioners, attorneys, and property owners that were looking to expand their properties. Next article, please. Article 20 is a bit more involved. This article germinated from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And as you can imagine, the Zoning Board of Appeals is engaged with single-family and two-family properties in town. These are property owners that are looking to update, modernize, put additions on their, on their single and two-family dwellings. And many of those dwellings are pre-existing non-conforming. It means that they have undersized lots. So this article would provide opportunities for the zoning board to grant zoning relief via a special permit rather than a variance. Everything that I'm about to discuss without, without town meeting approval currently requires a variance, and a variance is legally extremely difficult to obtain. It requires the board to find a hardship that's unique to the land. A special permit is discretionary in nature, and it's a lower threshold for the zoning board to, to grant relief. The reason that this relief is, is needed, and why the zoning board is, is asking for this, is that dimensional flexibility is needed. The zoning that applies to single and two-family in Chelmsford dates back to 1963. And due to that, 80% of the lots, the lots that are in your neighborhoods, are significantly undersized. So this creates, in, in current terms, in 2023, these undersized lots create an undetended and artificial mathematical cap on the size of the structure, the total size of the structure that can be accommodated on these undersized lots. So for example, in the RA zoning district, 60,000 square feet is required, 100% of the lots are undersized. In our RB zoning district, which is primarily where most of the single-family lots in Chelmsford are, exist, 40,000 square feet is required, and 62% are undersized. Many of those are 10,000, 20,000, and 30,000 square feet. So as you can see, from 1963 to 2023, every decade or so, the town was increasing the lot size in order to manage, manage development and growth. And then finally, in the RC, which is our two-family zoning district, 20,000 square feet is needed, and 73% are undersized. So recent trends that the zoning board has been tracking, pre-COVID and post-COVID, indicates that single-family and two-family homeowners want to continue to modernize, put additions on their house. This is for purposes of accommodated, limited accessory apartments, age-friendly, they want to work from home, they have growing families, many of our first-generation homes don't have garages, and they're choosing to stay and update their existing homes rather than move or relocate from the town. What's interesting is that as part of the research, most suburban towns do not regulate building coverage and floor area ratio for purposes of single and two-family residential structures. So this slide outlines the specific amendments that town meeting is being asked to consider. Section B.1 is an existing provision, and it clarifies applicability that it relates to conforming situations per the dimensional table. B.2 is a new provision, specific to a special permit, which would allow the zoning board to grant up to a 20% increase per the sliding scale, again, for pre-existing non-conforming situations. B.3 is, is an additional new special permit provision, specific to maximum building coverage, which would allow the zoning board to increase it up to 40% in the RB zoning district for single families, and up to 30% for two families. And this slide provides the mathematical examples as to what 40% and 30% equals in particular zoning districts. Section B.4 is also a new special permit provision. This is specifically related to floor area ratio. The zoning board is proposing to handle this on a case-by-case basis whereby they would be, have the ability via special permit to increase the floor area ratio. It's currently 0.15 in the RA and goes up to 0.25 in the RC. Provisions 3 and 4 per town council's input would not apply to multiple principal structures on one lot. Next slide, please. So I've mentioned building coverage and floor area ratio. The reason that those, that those two dimensional requirements are being discussed is that when you get, and this slide outlines this, when you get into lot sizes of 10,000, 15,000, and up to 20,000 square feet, these are small lots for, for Chelmsford current day standards, when you combine building coverage and floor area ratio, you create a mathematical no-go based upon, based upon the, that lot size. So essentially, what is happening right now is that you have single-family and two-family homeowners who are undersized lots, they want to put additions on, they're required to go to the zoning board for a variance. As I mentioned, the variance is rather difficult to obtain. Points of context, here's some real-world examples. As I mentioned, if you, if you combine maximum coverage, you're, you're creating a no-go situation. Many single-family homes under 10,000 square feet, such as the Westlands neighborhood, already exceed the 15% lot coverage without a garage. Many single-family homes on 20,000 square feet may want to expand to have a two-car garage or add a limited accessory apartment. Next slide, please. So these, the, I'm sorry, one, one back. So this is a, these two slides are examples, real-world examples that are, have been in front of the zoning board. The first case is a single-family home. This is on Rainbow Avenue. And as you can see, this, this applicant applied to the zoning board in December of 2022. It's been continued since then because in January, the zoning board began the process of advancing this, this zoning article. So this is a single-family home on 10,720 square feet, very typical in this, in this neighborhood and throughout town. The maximum building coverage permitted is 15%. So that's 1,608 square feet. The maximum FAR permitted is 20%, which is a gross total square footage of 2,144. So this particular property owner proposed to add a one-car garage and a limited accessory apartment, which would equal 1,008 square feet. So as you can see mathematically, between the building coverage and FAR, the math just doesn't work on a lot of 10,000 square feet. So while the numbers may seem complicated, the picture in the, in the bottom right-hand corner, I think, you know, really boils this down in the, in the context of the neighborhood, puts it into perspective. That's a typical single-family example. Next slide, please. So this is a two-family example. This project is located on, on Third Street. They applied to the zoning board in, back in March of 2022. This variance was denied in three in favor, two against. The variance requires a minimum of four votes to approve. So you can see the, the zoning board, majority of the board was willing to grant this, didn't see it as detrimental to the neighborhood. In this particular case, it's a two-family on 11,802 square feet. It's a neighborhood zone for two-family, and as I mentioned, many of our two-families are on undersized lots, less than 20,000 square feet. So you can see the, again, you can see the math play out, existing conditions and proposed Under both scenarios, in summary, existing caps on building coverage and floor area ratio make it rather difficult, if not impossible, for single-family homeowners and two-family homeowners to expand their houses, to modernize their houses in the face of requiring, currently requiring a variance from the zoning board. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
What I don't understand is, when we're making it easier for people to add onto their homes and cover their lots with more building, why do we want our community to have a lot more building on it than have it, have it become easier for people to do that? I don't, I don't understand. I mean, I could, I could see people coming in and just raising their house, putting all the water and facility on the street where they should have it. It's not okay for the zoning board to do this. We're making it easy for our town to adjust to the purpose, is the way I see it. And I don't know that.
Sure, no, understood. And that's been a common question throughout this process. So the starting point is that the setbacks, the distance between the house and the, and the side yard and rear, rear yard lot lines is not changing. So while the building coverage and the floor area ratio is, is requested to be increased, the setbacks, the distance between the, the adjacent homes remains the same based upon that historic sliding scale.
In all areas, small lots and large lots?
Correct, based upon the historic sliding scale. Right, so in the Westlands, it's a, it's a 10-foot setback. So in between houses, there should be 20 feet.
So you're not changing that scale at all?
The, one of the provisions, provision B.2 would allow the zoning board to, to do a 20% decrease. So you go from 10 feet to 8 feet in, in the Westlands.
So if you just talk about wanting to do that, it's a different way of thinking?
No, this, what I said, it was the starting point is setbacks. So the prime, the primary concern for residential neighborhoods is the proximity of one house to another house. So the starting point for congestion, for lack of a better word, is setbacks. So setbacks remain the same with the exception of, section B.2 is proposing to allow the zoning board to further, further provide flexibility up to 20% per the sliding historic scale. Again, without that sliding, without that additional flexibility, someone in the Westlands would not be able, would not even have an opportunity to consider an expansion of their house. So the zoning board is looking for some, some limited additional flexibility on setbacks. As it pertains to the rest of the article, you're left with a choice, and this is really where, what town meeting is voting on, whether, whether you want to maintain a hard line in the sand related to how much a single-family or a two-family can be expanded, or consider what the zoning board is, is requesting, which is allow an opportunity via special permit where a single-family homeowner would be able to engage via public hearing, a butter notification to all of their, all of their neighbors within 300 feet, and have an opportunity to have a discussion with the zoning board. Without, without the relief, there will be, there will be increasingly number of cases where these homeowners are left with either a variance, which as I mentioned, the zoning board is not legally inclined to grant. And at that point, you're basically telling your homeowners that what you have is what you need to live with. And, and what, what I've explained to you is, the trends in the community indicate that people who move, move to Chelmsford and who have, who have been here for an extended period of time want to remain not only in their house, but in the community. And so they're, they're choosing to want to expand their home, modernize their home. Examples were houses that don't have a garage. In 2023, people want a garage. So this, these provisions would allow those opportunities to be considered.
If we're increasing the tax base?
Yeah, certainly, certainly, modernizing your housing stock is one way of maintaining your tax base.
Yeah, if you, if you took away the setback variance on the equation, how would that impact this? You know, you're not making it look so tight. If you took that 23, whatever degree B, whatever it was, setback variance, how would that impact the ability of people to do what they want to do?
It's always on a case-by-case basis. If you take a house situation in the Westlands, and they're, and they're currently at their 10-foot setback, and let's assume they want to put in a, they want to expand their kitchen, they want to expand their, their first floor somehow, there's no, there's no legal ability other than the variance.
The only way is up?
Correct, correct, correct. So, so the, so within context, you know, that'd be a two-foot, we're talking about two feet within the Westlands, 20% of, of 10 feet. So it's not a lot. So the zoning board is trying to balance the, the, you know, the wide diversity of neighborhoods in town, the historic zoning bylaws that we've incrementally tried to adjust on the fly.
Okay, so if you gave them, you can, you can have more on the lot, but you can't have the setback. You can, you just said the only way is up, but, you know, so there's no way to get, today, there's no way to get around that setback, or is it this, the variance?
It would be a variance.
And is that also done through, you know, by the butters and whatnot?
Yes, yes.
So how is the process really different?
The process itself is the same. Any, any special permit or variance, any project that goes to the zoning board requires a public hearing, all the butters within 300 feet are notified. The variance requires four out of five votes. A special permit requires a simple majority.
So, okay, so three, three to two could win, and that's the, what, the one?
Zoning board, the zoning board.
Okay, so it's one vote?
Yes.
That would make the difference between this. It still gets voted by the same people?
Correct.
So it's not a relaxed or more favorable planning board, right?
This would be the zoning board, the zoning board's an appointed board?
These meeting people. Yeah, so the, the zoning board is kind of relaxed. If we kept the variance as is, you know, they're, they probably get what they want in more cases. Or if we, if we introduce it once again, three out of two, three out of two, there's one vote that's making sense.
So the, the zoning board, the zoning board doesn't want, the primary motivation for this is, they don't want to hear that a, a resident went into town hall and was told by town staff that what you want to do is a no-go. That you have the legal right to apply for a variance, but you're likely not, not to get that variance. The zoning board wants to have a forum, provide a forum whereby almost any project that's within reason, based upon these standards, has the ability to apply to the zoning board and have a conversation with their neighbors and with the board. There was a question back here?
Hey, just for clarification purposes, with the theory we're discussing, that's a only way is up scenario, that still is affected currently by FAR requirements, which are going to be changed by this bylaw, correct?
Correct.
And so this would allow the social permit process instead of the variance process in which you would have the ability to build up without affecting the setbacks?
Exactly.
And my understanding is that the zoning board of appeals is currently inclined to grant what's called friendly variances, in which they, there are no specific conditions or special circumstances with property, but they'd say, for instance, let you build up because it's not affecting the setbacks, so in appearance, it's not affecting the community, but they feel that they don't have the authority to do it, you know, or they want this, to build the social permit process so that they are, is that right?
Correct, that's a good summary.
I think, I think it's like, if a builder comes in to build some kind of, you know... I think, I think it's like, if a builder comes in to build some kind of, they can bring houses closer together by being, if we need to, so does this give the zoning for the ability to allow the individual to have more freedom, like if they're living with that?
No, so this, this pertains to existing structures. It does not pertain to new development.
No, I didn't mean to do that. I know. Financially, can that, can that, a homeowner who wants a two-family home and has to go through all this, can it, would it be easier for them, than it would be, make it easier like it does for the developer, for the people? So what do you think, you have this little lot?
Right.
So this is an individual, you're spending less money on everything to go in front of the zoning board, under it, and be able to get this and then get that variance, am I right?
This is, this is to make the process easier for a single-family and two-family, right? Based upon the community trends that the zoning board is seeing via their applications. Any other questions? No, great, thank you.
On a larger block, is it, you said on a smaller block where it's 10-foot setback, they give you 20%. On a larger block where it's 20%, is it...
It's still 20% for a setback.
Or...
Correct.
16 feet instead of 20 or something?
Correct, yeah, that historic sliding scale, again, starts at 1938 is when zoning was adopted and goes all the way to 63. We haven't changed zoning since 1963. Thank you.
All right, the next article, Article 21, has been withdrawn by the sponsors, the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, and I think they'll be coming back with a proposal at a future town meeting. Article 22, and basically the rest of the articles will, are community preservation articles, and they're pretty straightforward, so we'll go through these rather swiftly. The first one is the ever-occurring first article at Springtown Meeting, and that's to basically fund the existing debt service on previously-approved community preservation fund projects, provide administrative expenses for the committee, and set aside the required 10% reserves as by the state. You can see the reserves amounts are $145,000 of the funds collected for each of the 10% requirements for open space, historic resources, and community housing, and then a general reserve. With the anticipated forecast is that the town will collect 1.415 million in community preservation fund revenues in the upcoming fiscal year, and that we expect the state will provide an additional $385,000 match, a $1.8 million. And you can see the 10% that I just mentioned earlier. Our existing debt schedule, as you can see, the products that we have outstanding debt are on our Varney Playground, Robb's Field, Chumsford Woods, which is the housing project on Littleton Road, the turf fields at the McCarthyian High School, and the Warren Pole Open Space Land Acquisition. And you can see, the total of that is $400,000. And you can see the debt service, some of them expire as soon as 2025 at Varney, and the Warren Pole, which is a recent project, goes to 2031. So of the 1.8 million, we'll be paying $400,000 for previously-approved projects' debt service. So that's what happens there, and, you know, it's, again, it's really a legal obligation of the town moving forward. The next article is replenishing the Community Preservation Fund Capital Improvement Fund, which the committee has allocated over the years to fund individual small projects that arise during the course of the year, that people come with requests before the committee, in this case, for capital improvements on conservation land. And, you know, so again, that fund is now down, so again, every few years, they come in, and that avoids coming in for a line of projects at every town meeting. The next one is actually a proposal to acquire a parcel of open spaceland. It's located off of Wilson Lane, off of Stony Brook. And the best way to describe it is, it's the parcel there with the X, the 29, 114, 18 there with the X. The town owns all the land, if you go up the brook, is currently owned, and the idea is to expand the conservation corridor by acquiring this 1.3, 4-acre parcel. The acquisition price is 28, $29,800 for that parcel. And then the hope is that in future years, they'll be able to acquire additional land going down Stony Brook, so you would have more of an access corridor for that. So again, it's part of the efforts to preserve open spaceland and protect a corridor out there. And so again, they've reached an agreement with the property owner to pay the current assessed value for the property, again, which is less than $30,000. The next article, Article 24, is a, again, I mentioned was that capital improvements for the conservation lands, I'm sorry, I took that one out of order. Article 25 is a conservation land easement. This is one where the Conservation Commission is granting an easement to an abutting property owner on conservation land. And as you can see, Shore Drive, and you can see the easement is to the right there, to the top, you can see the driveway goes off of the parcel and goes onto the town's conservation land. And the next slide actually shows it in color, living color. So this driveway was there, it's been resurfaced, and basically, what the commission is doing is providing an easement only for driveway purposes for that home out there on, off of Two Shore Drive.
Is that an easement forever?
Yes, yes, that will convey with the property. So again, it's no other purpose, other than for purposes of passing and repassing over the driveway, as depicted on the plan.
Is there a reason why that's designed that way?
That was how it was built. And I think what happens is, particularly near the lakes and ponds, there was always, there's always been some historic uncertainties in terms of where lot lines were. And again, I think in this case, this, where there was nobody there, you know, the driveway was built, and then when it was, usually what happens is, somebody comes in for either financing or refinancing of a home, and the lender comes in and says, "Well, you've got a problem here." Yeah, exactly.
I would call that, I would call that a driver. If the driver goes up to the side of the house, why is it a loose like that?
Yeah, yeah, because there's a car, right? Isn't there a car?
If you go back to the...
The horseshoe.
Yeah, if you go back to the lot plan, if you go back to the previous slide, you'll sort of see the other way.
They don't have that horseshoe.
Yeah, but they own a car that can go in.
No, you're going the wrong direction. Whoever's running that, John, if you could go back, if you go up there.
I appreciate it, it is the way, I don't debate that at all. Why can't it just be a driver? Why do they need that?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like it was an encroachment at some time, and now they're trying to solve.
Right, yes.
If that was, look like that original, it's over 20 years old. So we just say, okay, if you would...
But you can't, you can't take prescriptive easement against a municipal government. If it were private property, you would. You would have a prescriptive easement by being virtually of 20 years. So you can't, you can't do that.
No, but when I say preferences of town meeting, if it was private property, wouldn't things like that be used?
Right. The difference is, is in order for them to have clear title to that driveway, they have to have, they have to obtain an easement from the town.
Is this a new owner?
I don't know. Honestly, I don't know. This came through the Conservation Commission. I imagine commissioners will be able to answer that at town meeting.
This is mortgage inspection by 2022.
Yep.
So probably...
So probably was a new owner.
It's not a threat, but a nice lawn.
Oh, sure. We can basically, we can put a fence up along the drive and we can, you know, it's the town's land, and as I said, you can't have a prescriptive easement against the town. The case was brought before the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission said, given the circumstances, we'll ask the town meeting to approve an easement for driveway purposes only, which means they can't build upon it, can't do anything else with it, other than use it for as a driveway.
In the past, when I've seen things like this come through, it's always been something of a reason why they need to have it go back through there. Do you follow me?
No, I know what you're saying. I can't give you the reason.
I see a reason.
Again, I was not part, that can be, that can be answered by the commission at town meeting, I don't know.
And then as town meeting reps, we have to ask the question, what is the town losing? What are we taking away from the other townspeople in terms of access to, what conservation land is that? Is that, you know, so someone's basically saying, "This is my driveway," but what if someone wanted to walk through that conservation land?
It doesn't give them, doesn't give them ownership, it just gives them the right to pass. So you can, you still, as a town resident, can walk on that driveway, they can't kick you off.
You can park at the end of that driveway and walk into the conservation land.
Yes, yes.
But if the easement is granted, you can't park and block it.
That's correct.
Oh, but that's what I thought I just asked.
No, no, but you, you know, they can't kick you off of it. If you grant an easement, they have the right to travel on it, it doesn't make it private property.
Right, so anyone who could come, if you buy cars to come park there, if they want, I don't know what they're trying to get to. You know, like, that's the town reps, we want to protect what the town's land is, right? So what are we, what by doing this? Because if it's someone's driveway, it's down to a point of contention, you know, if someone parks there, how do they know, you know, that it's really an easement, and then everyone will probably say, "Well, they're in my driveway, do you mind?" You know, that type of conversation. You know, what is the, what is the land beyond there? Is it something precious?
Well, the lake is right there.
The lake's on the other side.
You could park there.
Yeah, you could, but you still have to give them the right, if you grant them an easement...
Why would you want to?
Yeah, I don't have to be there.
Based on photos, they're mowing all that land.
It's being maintained.
Sure.
Great, because of the town.
Right, my guess is that nobody was doing anything with it, but, as you said, the property owner, until they went and, a mortgage inspector came in and said, "Hey, wait a minute."
Yeah, it's not a clean title, so they had to make it right.
Exactly.
Also, to put a fence up, it's going to cost you a whole lot of money, why would you want it?
And to keep it. And keep it...
Yeah, but it's like, you know, it's, this is something we're giving away forever, you know, and, you know, so that's why, as reps, we want, we want clear to check the town.
There's no money involved. All it's saying is that they have the right to use that driveway. There's no financial, no donation. But even if we give them a replacement for the driveway, it doesn't need to be in perpetuity.
Yeah, it would be in perpetuity.
I took out the town, town, or town rep.
Yeah, it would run with the, it would run with the land.
Oh, then I, that makes a difference. If it's only for those people who are currently living there.
No, no.
Because there's no guarantee anyone else would mow the grass.
Right.
You'd be better off, they didn't mow it for us. But it's not moving, moving. We're not going to go out there to town and maintain that property. I...
And it's been like that since the beginning. Look, there's a difference.
All right, we can all do this next week at town meeting. I want to let you get home at a decent hour.
I'll talk to you next.
Right, yeah, okay, all right. Thank you.
Because a lot of this is...
I agree with you, I think the town's land is a lot of pressure, like I think, and the drivers have been there under property for a few years.
Okay, okay, next, yes.
Did you just represent, it was the show, the show, you know, just give them what it was, so that they're looking at, not...
Okay, I will do that. Article 26, the next article is a request by the town clerk for the preservation of the town's vital records. You've seen these come every couple of years, as they're moving through the town's inventory of historic records preservation. This went back to the plan that was construed back in February of 2013. And again, the photos probably tell you the best picture in terms of what's taking place here. These are the type of the records that go back, again, the town's almost 380 years old. You've got books that go back, you know, tax books, you know, other vital records, birth marriages, and so you get records that, like, these are records of taxes back in the 1700s and so forth. So they go from looking like that, to the next slide, you sort of see the nice, on the right and on the left, the nice, you know, bound edition. So again, the clerk's office is periodically updating the town's vital records, and this is the next phase of that work. The next article has to do with the installation of new playground equipment at Highland Playground, Highland Avenue Playground, which is off of John Street. The slide sort of, again, sort of give you the big picture of what's taking place here. That's the aerial view of the playground, used to be, remember, the old Highland School. And now it's the housing authority there, and we got the soccer field, as you can see in the bottom, and then the playground area. The playground area is aged, it's not accessible. That's the existing type of equipment. You look at the right, you'd never see that stuff at a playground today, because children would get hurt. So the idea is to replace that type of equipment with the, with modern, accessible equipment. Again, you can see, none of this stuff is compliant in their safety concerns with what's out there. So this is the proposed playground. Again, much like you see today, it's very different than when we were younger, but this is the type of playgrounds that are safe for children today, in terms of fall zones and such, and that's the layout. And the estimated cost is $46,200.
Are there any ADAs?
That's what this is. This is fully ADA-accessible playground.
But then it's not wheelchair, it's not...
Right. But it has all that, yeah, equipment on there. Article 28 is for the preservation of headstones at Forefather Cemetery, $8,000. And again, this is a batch of headstones that are in, and you can hear the photos of the type of work that's taking place, where, again, they just warrant attention for preservation so that, you know, they get repositioned and cleaned up and so forth, again, respecting, you know, the sacred ground that it is in the center. Article 29 is the Center Village Brookwalk, and this is a project that, and I'm going to bring Evan back up for this, because this project originated with the planning board when they approved the Oddfellows Building, where you're seeing, right in the center, where they're putting in the new restaurant facade and the housing up above. And Evan can explain how the, and he will explain how the planning board executed an easement, and now we're looking, in the town also, you approved the town acquiring the parking lot in the rear of their property, and now how we're going to transform it into a Brookwalk.
Next slide, please. Okay, so this project dates back to 2013 with the Center Village Master Planning, Master Plan. That plan identified a Brookwalk in Center Village as a concept. So what is being proposed, as the town manager mentioned, behind the Oddfellows, as part of that planning board approval for that private development, they were required to provide a public easement on private property to accommodate the Brookwalk. Then ultimately, the town purchased the remainder of the parking area. So what is proposed is a roughly 300-foot, plus or minus, gravel path, that it will be 36 inches in width, between the edge of existing paving and the top of the canal wall. That will be the area for the Brookwalk. This is an image from 2013 to show the full extent of the Brookwalk. One portion is already in place, that's behind Gris Mill 1. This, what is being proposed here is very much akin with what is already in place with Gris Mill 1, a gravel, hard-packed gravel, 36 inches wide, ADA-accessible to the maximum extent, feasible in proximity to Beaver Brook. Next slide, please.
So you just talked about, this one is 36 inches, the new one wants 30 inches? Doesn't have to be 36 inches anymore?
So the new one will be proposed at 36 inches.
Okay, because you think it's a 30?
Understood, yes. So at one point, as part of the permitting for the Oddfellows project, this was, this concept was part of that initial project, and the Brookwalk concept, when it was being reviewed by DEP at the state level, raised some concerns. And so at that point, a 30-inch gravel path was considered, because there's an exemption within the State Wetlands Protection Act. However, what the town is interested in doing, now that we have easement along the entire section of that, of that portion of the brook, is to propose and obtain permitting for 36-inch. So more details here, as I mentioned, approximately 300 linear feet, starting behind Oddfellows, adjacent to the existing parking lot. The existing vegetative area that is currently there will be completely removed, it's all invasives. This process, we've engaged with the tree committee, the conservation committee, this will require permitting from the Conservation Commission, which proposes to remove all the invasive growth, preserve some nice mature trees that are identified on the plan. preserve some, some nice mature trees that are, that are identified on the plan, replace the invasives with a natural, environmentally appropriate seed mixture that's drought tolerant and native in nature. And then at the terminus of the, of the Brookwalk would be a proposed pocket park, which is approximately four parking spaces, would be, would be removed. The existing paving would be removed. The pocket park would be designed with permeable pavers, a place where someone may want to take a walk down. There likely would be a bench, a place for people to gather or, or sit. This will be an improvement to the environment. There will be improved stormwater management, infiltration, some nature-based solutions. As some of you know, that, that rear back corner of the parking lot is a low point, so it retains water and floods. This is viewed as a, as a, as environmental improvement, attempting to infiltrate the flooding and low-lying area while providing a, a public amenity. Total cost of this project is estimated to be forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Much of the physical work will be done by DPW, and as I mentioned, this will require permitting from the Chelmsford Conservation Commission. Any questions?
Can you go back to the first slide? So will this walk go all the way to the previous one? All the way to, is that Summer Street?
Yes, so the initial vision back in two thousand thirteen was and still remains to, it connected all the way to Summer Street. If, if you, if you were to walk, walk back there, there is an informal elevated. We may own some isolated parcels, but we do not own the majority of that.
And on the, on the far left side, does that connect to the rail track?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, what you see on that map, in, in the entirety is about a quarter of a mile.
I have one other question. The crosswalk currently is not where that line is.
Understood, under, correct.
Would we add a crosswalk, or would pedestrians using this need to walk up the street?
Correct, yeah, so this image dates back to two thousand thirteen. It's, it's a, it's an inspirational image at this point, because if you look closely, what's being proposed is on, is on the municipal side of the parking lot, and this image shows this section on, on the opposite side. But the, but the, the concept is to eventually, you know, weave a connected path.
And then the final article of the spring annual town meeting is for the preservation of the school street freight house. And this would be fifty thousand dollars for the dismantling, transporting, and preservation by moving it from the current location that's owned by the railroad over to the Garrison House on Garrison Road. There's a picture of the structure, believe it or not, it's still structurally sound building, and what they're, what they're going to do, the, the railroad denied the request to preserve it at its current location because they wanted the, you see how close the railroad track is to, to the building. So what they, what they have, will, willing to do is they'll donate the structure, and what the preservationists will do is they'll, they'll take down basically the four sides of the building, and then transport it across town, and then the Garrison House, everything will pay for the, for the, you know, basically restoration of, of the site at that location. So that's what, that's, so the contribution for the town is the fifty thousand dollars for basically getting it over there. So that would conclude the spring annual town meeting, and then what we do have before, yes, go ahead.
Hi, yes, going back about that, that building. Have they checked for, for paint to see if there's any light paint, or are you going to have a maintenance?
Yeah, that's all going to be handled by the Garrison House. So basically, that, what we're, that's a nonprofit organization. They're going to come in and basically, as I said, dismantle it, just strip it, and, and basically reconstruct it and preserve it as a freight house. And I, I don't know how they're going to deal with the paint issue, if they'll, how they'll, they probably work on it well before it's, before it's reassembled, would be my, my sense. So then the final thing is, we, we now have a special town meeting that's going to start place on Thursday evening, and these are issues that arose in the last couple of months, once the spring town meeting warrant was settled. And there's five articles and there's four items to consider. The first two pertains to a tax increment financing agreement, and this has to do with analog devices at Twenty Alpha Road, and the next article is Two Elizabeth Drive, and we're required by the state to have separate articles because there's separate parcels of land. But basically, where this arose from is, just about six weeks ago, we were, we were contacted by Analog Devices, and this all has arisen because of the realization by the federal government that they need to put onshore production of, of manufacturing chips. I think the last few years shown the vulnerability the country has for, for government purposes, i.e. military and other purposes, as well as civilian purposes, for semiconductor chip manufacturing capability. Analog produces chips for military purposes. And basically, right now, there is a national competition, meaning competition across states, you know, to house these facilities, because they bring investment as well as, you know, good-paying jobs. We've been contacted, as I said, about six weeks ago, from, from Analog Devices and the Analog Devices Federal LLC, which is a subsidiary wholly owned by Analog Devices, to reinvest in the facilities at Alpha Road and Elizabeth Drive. Alpha, the next slide, this, this shows you that the facility is a, it, it's a major investment of over, almost forty-two million dollars in clean room and manufacturing tech, technology and equipment. It would preserve two hundred and seven existing jobs at the site and add a hundred and eleven new jobs over a five-and-a-half-year period. The average salary for the new jobs is roughly sixty thousand dollars per year. It's a seventy-one thousand square foot building on almost six acres of land. The current tax assessment is seven point one million dollars. The property tax is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And so with this twenty-two million dollar investment, they get, they would get an incentive on the increment, i.e. what's, what's above that baseline. And generally, what we do is we, we provide an ascent assessment, in this case, over a ten-year period on a declining scale, and that way, as the incentive goes down, the tax revenue for the town goes up as our cost increase. So what happens is, at the end of the day, the property that we have, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in taxes, that will go up to over four hundred thousand dollars in taxes. And then the town's revenue sort of ramps up over that period, it, you know, by a ninety to, you know, ten percent per, per basis. And the next slide, final slide there, shows you what the basis of that is in real dollars. So in the first year, we get an additional forty thousand dollars in taxes, and by year ten, we get an extra four hundred thousand dollars in, in taxes on that, on that property and preserving the jobs at that site. And again, the reasons why we'd want to do this, again, it, it, it's a competitive marketplace. The state is also contributing incentives for this to get these jobs manufactured in Massachusetts and in Chelmsford. We are competing with companies across the, the country. It also helps promote the town's manufacturing corridor at one twenty-nine. And again, it maintains our existing property tax revenue, avoids, you know, vacancies, and, and increases our activity for the, the capital, the Chelmsford businesses who support, those who work at this facility with, you know, sort of the spin-off effects of where they dine, eat, everything else that goes on out there. And similarly, the, the, Two Elizabeth Drive is more of the R and D facility by Analog Devices. So there, it's, again, it's the office building asset at Two Elizabeth Drive. It's currently, they're looking at only a twenty-one million dollar investment there for clean room and lab space, furniture fixtures, equipment, and other investments. There, a hundred and fifty-eight employees would be retained and twenty-two new employees added over a five-and-a-half-year period. The average salary for these jobs is a hundred thousand dollars. So again, the current assessment at that site for the seven acres, for the hundred and six thousand square foot building is eleven point seven five million. They pay over two hundred thousand dollars in property taxes. So when you factor in, we work with the assessor's office and the chief assessor, that if they put that fifteen million dollars investment in the clean room and manufacturing space, what results to the building, again, the same ten-year signing scale, and then the chart sort of shows you, again, in this case, the existing two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in taxes would increase to two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars per, you know, of additional taxes. Basically, the taxes on that building would, would basically almost double, more than double, and then you see how the town ramps up over that period. Where, where are you, John? Go to the next slide. So the first year, we get twenty-eight thousand dollars in taxes, and by year ten, we'd get two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in taxes for that, for that property. Again, the, the goal here is to put us in the game. The, the, this is moving fast. The reason is, is there's a federal funding round at the end of June. If we approve this at town meeting next week, they then go to the state economic board for the state's approval next month, and then they're able, Analog will submit for federal funding as early as this June, and we hope to get funded, or this will get funded. And, you know, again, if, if it doesn't get funded, then, then nothing happens. This is only for this project and for this purpose. If, if nothing happens, it's not a permanent, you know, tax break for the property or anything like that. You know, if, if it doesn't happen, it's a wash, but if it does happen, again, it would provide investment in those buildings as well as, you know, good-paying jobs in the community. Yes, Helen? No, it, it's not based on the town's tax classification. It's based on the increment of the valuation of the property. So if, right, if the town did contract that, then you're right, that would shift with it. They, no, it's not tied to the town's tax split. Yes, okay, yes.
If it differs, if they left it, does this connect to the land, or is it?
No, it's only to the company. So if they were to relocate or dissolve or whatever, it doesn't tie to the land. It's only to the company. And in fact, if they don't produce the jobs and investment that's called for it, then the tax incentive all goes away. So what happens is they have annual reporting with the state on job creation and investment, and that maintains their certification to continue with the program. Because, again, they're not only getting local property tax relief, they're also getting state job credits, you know, for investment as well. So, no, it is very specific to the company for the purpose. Yes.
I'm trying to understand the whole thing. If, if, it's a hypothetical, if they've been in, put all the investment in, generated the jobs they're seeing, but this were not in place, would the town, at the end of these ten years, have more tax work than we're allowed?
Oh, it'd be more. I mean, we're, we're basically sacrificing one point two million, five million in, in tax, yes.
And that is the incentive?
Yes, that's the incentive, and it's called incremental incentive because the baseline doesn't change.
And the other question I have is, is there precedent for this? Have we done this in this town before?
Yeah, the most recent one was Cronos, back in two thousand and twelve. We, we did, and, and remember, Cronos stayed. The problem was Cronos outlived the tax break, and then they grew so much that they went to the Towers and Lowell. Prior to that, Hitite Microwave out there on, and the corridor was, was provided. So yes, this is the precedent, and this is what the town has done, you know, with these jobs. Unfortunately, we, we had an opportunity a few years ago, and it never materialized, but, but, but the last successful one was Cronos, before that was Hitite Microwave.
We don't generate this opportunity, because these are these companies.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes, exactly. This, this, this was, this was, this was approached to us under a code name. It was Project Onyx. We had to maintain confidentiality and, and all this stuff. And then once, then once we said, okay, we now got to make it public, because we're going to town meeting, we were able, we were, we were able to release it, yes.
And again, there's a whole bunch of criteria that if they're not met, this all goes away.
Exactly.
Like if they never started.
They never start, they don't get the break.
Approved by the state.
Exactly.
Or if they don't follow through.
Exactly. Exactly, yes.
Do they have an increase of their storage or wastewater?
Yeah, you know, interestingly, they, we asked that question, and two things. One is, the answer is no, but two is, they're not subject to the moratorium because they're not expanding the footprint of the building. Think about it. They, they're not changing the, the square footage or the footprint of the building, so it would be like any other manufacturing facility in town. Our, our moratorium and our constraints don't impose limitations. It only is when you go to expand that you get constrained. So those are the two outs. The one is, they, they, and they came to us without knowledge of the moratorium. They came to us saying, what can we do here? We, we asked the questions. Well, what are you doing in terms of footprint? And they said, well, we're not changing the footprint. And then we said, well, how much more water are you using in sewer? And they, they basically came back and told us there's no more sewer consumption. So that's, that's where that's at. But it, but again, even if they were, it would be subject to the moratorium because we don't go inside of facilities, you know, that are, that are expand, that are not expanding.
Not possible to add in two hundred here, not increase the.
Right, but again, most, but, exactly, but, but now I don't know, again, I just don't know what their work schedules are at that site, but yes.
I was going to say, in the manufacturing side, you have to be present in doing.
Exactly. But I don't know the technology that they're using today in terms of manufacturing process versus what they currently have, and, you know, they, there's, I, there's only, there's only so much information they provided us. Yes, yes, Jim?
Yeah, the quality is not no change. There's no change footprint, it's possible to change the use.
Exactly.
So changing use is how they would trigger. So say you did a change footprint of property, when you change the use of the property, that would trigger the moratorium. But not changing the use of the property, you're staying the same footprint, not changing the use, that would trigger it.
Exactly. No.
No, this is great.
This is great. Right, the, the, there's no further questions. The next article is the Home Rule Petition. This pertains to Ledge Road. This is a request to submit in a, basically, Home Rule Petition is a request from a city or town to the state legislature to pass a special law unique to the municipality and the particular location. And what this would do is, this would restrict the weight and capacity of, of vehicles traveling along Ledge Road to the quarries in town. It would limit it. There's, there's the map that sort of shows you the pathway. The red is Ledge Road. The quarries are across the town line in Westford, and the, the residents on Ledge Road have just been besieged with commercial truck traffic. We have the documents that show the increase in trucks, you know. Now, over a third of the trucks on Dunstable Road, in Swain Road, near Dunstable Road are commercial trucks. We see it on, on Route Forty, Groton Road. Now seventeen percent of the trucks are there, and you can see it on Swain Road, north of Groton Road, almost thirty percent of the trucks. Since this is an effort, sort of the all-in, all-of-the-above approach, where we're trying to do every means possible, and in this case, a request by the legislature to legally restrict the size of the vehicles on Ledge Road in a means of providing relief to the property owners, and that's what it looks like. This was a, a photo taken by a resident of Ledge Road last summer, of trucks going up and down their roadway, accessing the quarry, which on a, on a, on a, you know, a, a side road that was, that is, is, you know, is not meant for this level of traffic or the width of these vehicles. So that's what we're trying to do here, is again, as part of an all-in approach arsenal of trying to do anything we can. In this case, we hope to get the attention of the state government and the legislators, and, and our new representative, Wladny Elliott, has, has been at the forefront of this one to, you know, advance this at the legislature, to see what we can do. And we're also undertaking other efforts. This is not the only one, but this is sort of another, you know, tool in the toolbox to say, well, maybe we can get a Home Rule Petition from the state government. Yep.
So, like a moving truck, does it still come through?
Oh, sure. Yeah, or a fire truck, you know, a fire truck, a snowplow, service like that has to be done. But the point is, is it's not, it's not these guys going every day. No, this is a side street. And this is, you're not too far from here, if you, you. You, no, you can't impede, because they're, 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 you know, it is, it is a public road, and there are businesses and properties at the end of the road that have historically been serviced. The problem here is not the use, it's the intensity of the use is what's gotten out of hand.
And they're going to Westford.
Yes, they're going to, right, because there's no other, if you go to that map, there's no other, there's no other way to get there. That's the problem.
Westford blocked it out, so I thought I heard it being like.
No, you're confusing two things. The front of the Westford is the asphalt plant. The rear is the quarry, you know, great, and, you know, so there's two, so Newport Materials, the asphalt. Materials, the asphalt plant on Groton Road, and Westford is the front. That's a separate business and establishment from the aggregate, Newport Aggregate, which is to the rear of the property, and then Graves Quarry is also back there. There's no other way to, believe me, we've been on this for years, there's no other way to access that property, or we'd have done it by now, and they'd have done it by now. So that's...
What's the solution?
Well, we hope this is part of the solution, which is to restrict the size and weight of the trucks going down there, so you don't have what, you know, the six and five and six-wheel vehicle, axle vehicles going down there.
They need like a train or something, or something.
Yeah, but there's no tracks.
Maybe...
Okay, and then the final two articles, the first one is the Center Elementary School boilers. This is a request for $210,000 to replace the boilers at the Center Elementary School, and this happened after the capital process that John described, that took place back in November, December, and into January. These boilers were installed in 2010, they weren't on the replacement schedule, they had, we expected they were going to go another seven years or so till 2030. They were in good condition. Unfortunately, this past winter, there was a crack in the, if you go to the next slide, John, there was a crack and damage to the combustible boilers itself. We basically kept our fingers crossed, had a temporary boiler on standby in case we needed the school to operate, in case the other boiler failed, it didn't. But now, the plan is to replace both the boilers, keep one of the other boilers for spare parts going forward, and then have the boiler system in the school going functional. So it's a case where you're well outside of the warranty, and now the question is going forward, the decision is the best thing to do is reinvest in two new boilers, keep the current functioning boilers as the spare parts and other equipment for it, and then basically service 20 years going forward on that facility. And then the final article has to do with the McCarthy School kitchen renovations. It's a request to borrow $550,000 to fund the full cost for the McCarthy School kitchen. Again, this, much like what John described earlier in the capital about the high school kitchen, which will come back for another round of funding. Back in fiscal '23 budgets, there was an appropriation of $438,000 to develop the design documents and planning and purchase of equipment for the kitchen. The goal is to get this work done this summer with the current reconfiguration of the middle schools, where next, and starting in September, all 7th and 8th graders will go to McCarthy, and all 5th and 6th across the town will go to Parker. So with the renovations at McCarthy, we'll finally get the kitchen done, so the additional $550,000 makes us basically a million-dollar project, or $545 a square foot, to basically rehab the entire kitchen. And then the last slide just shows you the, you know, what's happened here is, again, you've got inflationary factors and other unforeseen costs that were, when this was originally envisioned back in 2016. We need to add a hood installation for $100,000, we need to install for the board of health guidelines, an oil grease water separator, and a detailed construction plan for that site, for this project. So that will conclude our special town meeting, and that would, are there any final questions before we adjourn for the night? Yes?
Is that the picture, man? All these appropriations result in a balanced budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Are we...
We were, by law, not because we think it's a great thing, by law, cities and towns have to, Massachusetts have to pass a balanced budget, yeah.
And no additional debt?
Well, there's debt here, but our net debt is, net debt is basically remaining constant, yes.
Of all the things presented tonight, are there any of them?
Yes, the capital plan that Finance Director Souza presented, the $4.3 million capital plan, and then you've got a half million dollars there, yeah.
Okay.
Right, and now remember, we're running a $153.6 million operation, so percentage-wise, you know, as, you know, your debt is growing over time, the only tough part is now we're borrowing at little higher interest rates than we were a year or two ago.
In the past, you've done debt service, grants, parks.
Yep.
Is that something that...
That's all, that's, that's in, John has it, it's in the book. It's in the book, yeah. It's all in there. Yes, Kathy?
It's been a while since I've been so...
Yeah.
My question was, do we cook meals?
Yes, yes, we now, yes, we're back to cooking meals.
At every school.
Well, at the Parker School has a new kitchen, that one's done, this will be the McCarthy, and then we'll be back at fall town meeting for the final funding for the high school. The end of the day, meals will be cooked and prepared at the middle schools and the high school, and then they'll be transported to the elementary schools.
How many did you not cook at all?
Right.
But do they get your food?
Yes, and they get it free, there's no, under the new, under the new guidelines, yeah, under the new guidelines, every student gets a free lunch. So whenever it's told you there was no such thing as a free lunch, that changed for students.
It's gotta be...
Right.
They're doing that down south a lot. They don't want people who can't afford it.
They don't, right, they don't want food...
You know, bad, that they...
Exactly.
They don't want people going hungry.
Yeah, exactly. Well, thank you, we'll look forward to seeing you on Monday and Thursday nights next week.